Good evening and welcome to the December 19th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mrs. Lynn Snead, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, at this special and holy time of year, please help us all to give thanks for our blessings and remember to take opportunities to be a blessing to others. We thank you for those who serve and protect us by serving and protecting our community, our state, and our country. We ask for your wisdom and decisions made tonight and at every level of government. We pray especially for healing of the divisions in our country. And has been the request of people through the ages, Donna Nobis Pacim, grant us peace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Phillips to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Here. Oh, yes, sorry.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the December 5th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, December 5, 2016. Committee reports, Finance Committee, recommend that Council approve the 2017 budget and recommended that the appropriation orders be approved and that funding be approved for Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, and Troy Recreation Association. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation recommends ordinance number 05326 be approved vacating an alley adjacent to Miami County property. Resolution number R532016 authorizing funding for the Troy Recreation Association, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R542016 approving funding to Troy Main Street was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R552016, funding for the Troy Development Council was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 0532016, vacating an alley, was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number 0572016, appropriating funds, approving the budget for 2017, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 0582016, a reappropriation for 2016, was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number 0592016, imposing moratorium for an additional 180 days regarding medical, marijuana, first reading, and adopted. Following comments, Council adjourns 7:24 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
We will accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twiss to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll begin our committee reports this evening with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. Twiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Kendall and myself met on December 12th to consider the annexation of 55.8 acres in Concord Township to the city of Troy. This land is owned by the First Troy Corp. and is located east and north of Lidle Road. The county approved the annexation on September 29th. Based on the schedule prescribed by state law, Council now makes a final determination on whether to accept the annexation. If the land is annexed to the city, it would retain the current Miami County agricultural zoning. It would have to be rezoned to a city zoning before it could be developed. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the annexation of 55.8 acres, more or less, in Concord Township known as the First Troy Corp. annexation, and that is submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twiss.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Twiss. Recreation and Parks Committee is next with the report, and the absence of Chairman Heath. Mr. Tremblay, would you be able to read that report for us?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on December 12th, 2016, to consider recommendations from the Troy Recreation Board and the Board of Park Commissioners related to the placing of a limited 0.25% income tax increase on the May 2nd, 2017 primary election ballot for the purpose of funding park and recreation projects. Both boards recommended that an additional income tax levy be placed before the voters. The committee and Council had received the attached Operation Recreation Initiative report. As a part of the committee discussion, representatives of the Operation Recreation Committee, as well as representatives of a number of organizations that would benefit from the improvement, spoke in favor of the proceedings with the initiative of Operation Recreation and asked that Council place a short-term income tax increase on the ballot to fund the projects so that the matter could be voted on by the citizens. Discussions also noted the positive economic impact the improved recreational facilities could bring to the community. It is the recommendation of the undersigned committee members that necessary legislation be prepared to place a 10-year 0.25% income tax increase on the May 2nd, 2017 ballot for the purpose of funding park and recreation projects. So that the legislation can be in place and effective prior to the February 1st, 2017 deadline for initiatives to be to the Board of Elections. We support emergency legislation, and that's signed by myself and Mr. Heath as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Are there any questions from Council? I would just like to mention to Council that if Council chooses to put this on the ballot again, we need to be assured that the pre- and post-election finance reports are filed, along with designated treasurer being placed on all the election promotion materials. It's my understanding that these things were not done the last time. Do we know who the treasurer will be yet of this campaign?
For the ballot initiative itself, from the city side?
For the, you mean the treasurer?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
It would be for the, when there's something on the ballot and there's someone that's promoting that, there's usually a designated treasurer. And I'm asking who that person would be for this initiative?
For an organized group, is that what you're, what you're?
Whoever's going to be promoting this.
It is my understanding that unless it's an organized, if it is an organized group that fulfills some state mandates, there has to be a treasurer. But in, especially the Operation Recreation Committee, we don't fulfill those requirements because we're kind of just a loosely associated private money that is supporting this as individuals and groups. So we're not a political action committee, if you will. I don't know that there's any other difference that needs to be fulfilled, but that's my understanding. I could be wrong. So if there's anyone with information different from that, I would gladly entertain it. However, if that needs to be done, then we will consider that within the Operation Recreation Committee.
Mr. Kerber, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you don't have an answer tonight, I would understand, but do they, I mean, generally, there's a designated treasurer on an effort like this, and I'm just curious tonight.
What I can indicate is, is, you know, obviously, there's some regulations as far as what the city can and cannot do. So we'll be certainly mindful of the city doing anything. But the Secretary of State puts together a very nice handbook that talks about the ins and outs. I don't know if there's been a proposal for money to be spent on behalf of one way or the other on this, but I certainly can forward that to you. It has excellent guidelines as far as when a treasurer needs to be designated, when there has to be financial reports done and not, but it depends upon the activity. So not knowing what is contemplated to be done to either promote this, it's hard for me to speculate and say what exactly has to be done, but there's certainly, it's certainly a concern that needs to be looked at.
Well, then, I will research that for, on behalf of the Operation Recreation Committee again, and we'll see where it leads us.
Yeah.
So I don't have a definitive answer this morning.
Yeah, that's fine. If we could get, you know, answers back, maybe.
Sure.
And then, the other question comes up as to who would be the one responsible for approving the final ballot? Is that the city, or is that the committee, or who would be, who's responsible for?
The ballot language itself?
The ballot lang, yeah. Like when my name appears on a ballot, they send me a proof, and I have to approve that before they place it on the ballot.
In the, Madam President, in the resolution, that's the first item on here, it does have the ballot language as part of that resolution.
Right.
And that would be, that's the proposed language for the ballot. And where that came from is, and the Ohio Revised Code, as you know, the state of Ohio has done an extensive revamping of municipal income tax laws and when you can do that and when you cannot, and how it has to be done. In Chapter 718, they've set forth how the ballot language should be set forth.
Right.
And what we've done is, is we use the language in 718 to put together the ballot language.
Right. But then when they, once the ballot is printed, it usually comes back with a proof to make sure that the ballot language that we designate is actually what appears on the ballot, and...
My understanding, that's sent to the clerk.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who decides where the decimal point goes?
That's in the ballot language. Mrs. Oda, a member of the Recreation and Parks Committee, I believe, has a minority report this evening on this.
Yes. It is the recommendation of myself as a committee member that necessary legislation be prepared to place a 10-year 0.25% income tax increase on the ballot for the purpose of funding park and recreation project. However, the undersigned, myself, does not support the legislation being presented as an emergency measure. Respectfully submitted, myself as a committee member.
Are there any reports from Council on the minority report? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address before addressing Council.
I'm Kathy Slack. I live at 918 South Mulberry Street in Troy. I'm a member of the Troy Skating Club. The Hobart Arena is a beautiful facility that hosts many non-skating events throughout the year, including concerts, cheer competitions, job fairs, graduations, et cetera. Now that the arena's been renovated, there will be even more opportunities for larger and a wider variety of events that appeal to all citizens. The downside to this is that the opportunities to use the ice surface for skating and hockey programs continues to decrease throughout the year. And with the closing of Hara Arena, there is a great need for a dedicated ice surface to serve and grow our figure skating and hockey programs, and to bring more competitions, hockey tournaments, and ice-related events to Troy. Additionally, having a dedicated ice facility in a non-arena setting would be more cost-efficient. There are many events that figure skating, U.S. Figure Skating wants to bring back to Troy, regional and sectional competitions, Theater on Ice, which we held in 2010 and 2013, but we can no longer hold it. It needs to have two sheets of ice. There are now 1,600 skaters for that week. Please keep Troy a great community to live in and raise our families. Please support this ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tamara Bainerd Ganger, 922 Branford Road, Troy, the Executive Director of the Troy Senior Citizen Center. And I'm sure as all of you are here more than, are more than aware that repairs and things to the center, we all fall under the Parks Board budget. And so, you know, we do have an aging roof. We've had some water damage in the building before. And so with the roof situation, we'd just be being proactive with getting a new roof on that building. And the back room has flooded a couple of times. While I've been there, that one very bad training storm, we actually had standing water back there that we had to get a shop back to get all the water out of it. And then we had, then the Parks Department came in and took care of the rest of what needed to be done back there in the craft room. And another thing that would be really great is, is what is it planned, if we get this money, is that new curbing with the parking lot? And I don't, if any of you have ever come around there through the evening and stuff, and you hit around that curb, that's kind of a little bit of a roll-drop-off feeling there. And so that would alleviate that problem, too. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernie Vogel, 3370 East State Route 55, Troy. I'm actually a resident of Lost Creek Township, but I work within and pace the city of Troy Income Taxes, so I would like to voice strong opposition to the quarter percent income tax proposal for the following reasons. Number one, it's a huge tax increase, $25 million over 10 years, for non-mission-critical, this isn't police, it's not fire, it's for a sheet of ice, golf course renovation, and some ball fields, which are all great and wonderful. City of Troy has a wonderful quality of life, but that is a huge tax increase for those reasons. Number two, it's a tax I'm forced to pay, living in the township, because I work in Troy, but I have no say, no vote, and it brings to mind taxation without representation, which I'm opposed to. Number three, I believe this is a poorly thought-out resolution, rushed to judgment, to put this on the ballot. I disagree with the emergency designation for this. It doesn't strike me as something that needs to be passed in such a short timeframe. In addition, it seems that a month ago, that the ideal funding for this was a property levy and was going to raise about $10 million. There was a $4 million financial, or private component which was talked about to raise the money for the Duke expansion, as well as the golf course and the senior citizen. Because of language on the ballot, my understanding that, the type where, or whatever it was, but that was pulled from the ballot about a day or two before the election. It just seems, it doesn't seem right to me that it's kind of a rush to judgment to come back a month later. It's suddenly, an income tax levy is the answer, and it's going to raise twice as much money as the original levy, the 25 million. And oh, by the way, because it's 25 million, all of a sudden, there's another $10 million project for the sheet of ice. So I think it's poorly thought out. It seems like an ad hoc reaction to a chain of events rather than a thought-out plan. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Taylor. I live at 2670 Kessler Colesville in Troy. I support the issue. I volunteered to be chairman of the capital campaign to raise the million and a half that, in addition to the monies that'll come in through the tax levy. In reading the, when I came in tonight, reading the city of Troy mission statement, I thought, wow, this is exactly what we're talking about. I mean, the whole thing, but the last line is, the last line on the thing says, "Growing economic base, strong educational environment, and plentiful recreation opportunities strengthened by public-private corporations and grounded in financial stability." So the whole statement is what I think this is all about for Troy, so I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buster Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. First of all, I agree with Oda, it doesn't need to be emergency. There's all kinds of time before this falls into effect, if it does pass, so I can't see why it has to be emergency unless you want to take the opportunity of the citizens to get a referendum up against it, and that's the only thing I can see for emergency. Next, I am opposed to this, due to the fact that the Troy Miami Shores Golf Course, we've been subsidizing it for years. Golf is out. Canoeing, kayaking, and bicycling is in. Even Troy Country Club said they would eliminate their initiation fee. It's not just in Troy, it's everywhere. Golf is going out of the system. The senior citizens were thrown onto the ballot to try to get some old people's votes, and, you know, that could come out of the general fund. It doesn't, you know, the whole thing could come out of the general fund, really. You've got more money, and you know what to do with. I mean, you did Treasure Island, you did the Hobart Arena, which now looks like an octopus out there, and it's been subsidized yearly. The one down in Dayton, Nutter Center, is, I don't know how many times, bigger than Troy's Hobart is, and they're having financial problems. So that, you know, that tells me, what are we going to do with a little town with a little bitty Hobart Arena? You know, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, and, you know, and the one thing you never want to forget is, next year, and if, maybe this is why it doesn't go into effect until the 18th of the year of 2018, is because next year, the schools want to put a levy on. And I don't want the people of Troy to forget that. There's another cost out of the people's pockets. We, we all, senior citizens, again, we didn't get a raise on Social Security again. This is four years out of the last eight with no raise on Social Security. You know, I mean, it's great when you're making $170,000, $200,000 a year, I mean...
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lance England, 635 Swales Road, Troy, representing Miami Shores Advisory Board. We feel that we're in full support of this levy. Miami Shores is a real gem for the city of Troy. It's a cornerstone for the recreational activities within the city. Right now, the clubhouse itself is in need of some major repairs. The roof itself is nearly 20, or excuse me, 30 years old. The HVAC is over 20 years old. The electric needs a new system. It's, there are many things on the electrical system that are out of code right now and have been grandfathered in. The carpet in the snack bar area needs replaced as soon as possible. So it's fortunate that the levy covers these items that are in need, and it also takes into account several needed upgrades to the look and the value of the property itself. The new layout of the clubhouse will be an added attraction. Usability of the clubhouse for more meetings and civic activities that we do not have now, and really, the big one is the driving range. It creates revenue for itself. It's going to bring more people into the game, give lessons, and grow the game. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Michelle Zolkowski, 1177 Fairway Drive, city of Troy. I represent the Troy Junior Hockey Booster Association. I'm on the board, and we unanimously across the organization support this initiative. I think for us, we have about 142 kids in the program this year. About half of them come from the city of Troy itself. We had to turn away over 24 kids just from lack of resources within the current arena from an ice, from an ice perspective. And we have kids sharing ice time and people practicing at 6:00 AM all the way to 10:00 PM for young kids, and it really is going to start to deter from the program's ability to grow if we continue to have such squeezed resources from an ice time perspective. I also think that there's additional economic value add the second sheet of ice would have, because it would allow you to not pay overtime for the resources that I've seen at 10 o'clock at night, taking down the ice and putting it back up for events. And I think it would allow the city to draw other attractions. We had a couple weeks ago, Silver Sticks Tournament that was hosted amongst four of the local ice rinks, and it would be great, from a volunteer perspective, to concentrate them into one. And so I think we could grow and expand the programs that are hosted within Troy. And that not only helps the arena and the kids in growing hockey, but I think it also benefits the local restaurants, the hotels, by having that many individuals come. There were over 40 teams from six different states that participated in that event. And I also think it would allow the arena itself to attract events that it currently doesn't have the size for. There's a certain capacity existing today at Hobart Arena that can't have certain conventions or other types of resources, but I think a second sheet of ice, not only for hockey, but with the ability to support some of those other ancillary events, would be additional economic value add. So I think that, in closing, we really do support it. We think it would be great for the city of Troy. I not only represent hockey, but my son also plays baseball and soccer, as well as my daughter, and I think some of those other resources are in desperate need of some investment. So I truly hope that you would agree to take this to the city of Troy and allow them to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Waite, 1688 Paradise Trail here in Troy. I am the field coordinator and a board member for the Trojan Soccer Club, which is the largest select soccer club here in the Troy area. I also coach two teams and assistant coach on a third team. I have three children that play for the Trojan Soccer Club. I fully support the Operation Recreation proposal to improve our parks and recreation facilities. Specifically, I can speak somewhat intelligently on the soccer part of it. The proposed improvements to add the three additional full-size 11 v. 11 fields, the additional parking, new entrances and exits are greatly needed at Duke Park. As a citizen, I know that parks and recreation are an important part of the community for attracting and retaining residents and businesses. Children, especially teenagers, which I have three of, need good parks and recreational facilities. The more time spent in supervised, structured activities, the less time to get in trouble. For the Trojan Soccer Club, we plan on having about 14 teams for spring. Seven of those teams will play on the full-size fields. We currently have two at Duke Park. For the fall season, one of those 11 v. 11 full-size fields was rested, so we were fighting for space for games and practices. The Troy Strawberry Soccer Invitational is one of the biggest events that is held here in Troy. Over 300 teams come to the Troy area to play soccer. That's over 500 games, 3,000 players, and that doesn't include the family members that come with them. Adding the additional fields at Duke Park will enable us to keep more teams and players in the Troy area, which would help our businesses with revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Titterington, can you explain briefly why the emergency legislation, just as an educational point?
The May 2nd levy by state law, the ballot would need to be certified to, or the language would need to be certified to the county elections board by February 1st, 90 days in advance of the election. With only three council meetings prior to that, the ability to discuss the issue, to make sure that it is able to be certified, signed and certified, and sent to the county, timing-wise, that's why the emergency was asked, and that's why the committee recommended that it go forward that way to the council.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions, then, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R562016.
Resolution number R562016. Sorry. A resolution specifying May 2, 2017, as the date is submitting to the electors of the city of Troy, Ohio, a proposal to increase the municipal income tax rate by one quarter of 1%, 0.25%, to be used solely for parks and recreational purposes, and directing the Board of Elections of Miami County, Ohio, to conduct the election and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading, and this does include the ballot language.
Are there any questions or comments from Council on the resolution?
I would move that we move forward to a second reading with no emergency.
Okay. Mrs. Oda has requested a second reading on this. Are there any objections to that? Okay. Then this will go to a second reading?
Doesn't it have to be second and voted on?
Not usually, but we could. I mean...
Well, I guess there's a little confusion...
Well, I guess there's a little confusion, because there seem to be two things there. If it's just to move to a second reading, you've not done a motion for that. We just take it to a second reading.
Right.
However, you did mention, take it to a second reading without emergency. That would be amending the legislation that's here, and that would, in fact, require a motion and a second.
I don't know how to word it, but I would like to take it to a second reading, second and third reading.
But you didn't, did you want, but you also said without emergency. Did you mean to amend that they...
Madam President, if there is no motion to suspend the rules this evening, it would just naturally go to a second reading, which would be first Monday in January.
Correct. That's correct.
Right.
So there hasn't been a second, it'll just go to a second reading because there's no suspension tonight.
Okay. All right. So this will go to a second reading. We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O 60 2016. Ordinance number O 60 2016, ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 5.80 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio. This annexation was previously supported to the county, approved by the county, and now been returned for final action. First reading. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mr. Twazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes.
Mr. Twazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O 61 2016. Ordinance number O 61 2016, an ordinance authorizing the submission to the electors of the City of Troy, Ohio, an increase in the city income tax in additional one-quarter of 1%, 0.25%, to be used solely for parks and recreational purposes, to become first effective January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. This is a companion piece to R 56 2016. Are there any questions from council?
I would again move that it go to a second reading.
Mrs. Oda is requesting that this go to a second reading. Without objection.
She said, she said actually a motion.
I don't know how to word it. She's making a request. I request it go to a second reading.
Is there any objection? This will go to a second reading, then. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, ma'am, there are not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
Four. I'll start with one I think we all are aware of, Brandon Fellers. One of our Troy police officers is retiring, and there will be an open house celebration for his 26 years of service to the police department. It'll be this Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00, and I'm sure he would appreciate seeing folks there and saying thank you. Many of you know, he's probably the longest DARE SOR officer that we also had in our district in the Troy schools. He's been involved 10 years in different time, in different capacities, but always with the part of the DARE SRO program, and I think that's commendable as well. So I wanted to say that and let you know when that will be taking place.
Is that here?
It'll be, no, it'll be over at the police department on Thursday at 2:00. That's number one. Number two is, I had the invitation and opportunity to be, last Thursday, to Miami Valley Veterans Museum. They had a special celebration program for all the veterans and invited guests, and I went there to also represent all of us and tell them thank you for their service and wish them a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And while I was there, they also then maybe come up front, and they gave, on behalf of all of us, all of us in the city, 2016 in appreciation of your support for the Miami Valley Veterans Museum in the City of Troy, Ohio. And they presented us with a plaque that signifies their support for us, as well as we support them. And I thought that was very nice. That was a surprise. I wasn't expecting that. That's two. Number three is, I also received a letter today. We all know the weekend was a little treacherous to travel about. And I received a letter starting with ho, ho, ho. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read part of it. "A huge thank you to the City of Troy, the Street Department, professionals for salting the sidewalks and quadrant around the Santa House. You ensured that the good little boys and girls and their families could safely come to my house and tell what they would like for Christmas. Troy has always been one of my favorite towns to visit, as I fly over the beautiful downtown with the beautiful Christmas tree, the beautiful lights. Well, it almost reminds me of my home in the North Pole. Thank you again for making the square safe and a thing of beauty. Have a very Merry Christmas and a happy 2017. Signed by Santa himself." With the bell. So I thought you'd like to hear that as a testimony of the efforts that our crews made over the weekend. The last thing I wanted to say to all of us, including all of our residents in our community, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa. But bottom line is, I'll echo what Lynn shared, peace and joy to all. We sure could use it. Peace and joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, do you have comments this evening?
Well, I do. They're a little drier than the previous.
Santa, you can't beat Santa.
How do you follow that? Just a couple of brief announcements. First of all, the city is closed. City Hall is closed the 23rd, the 26th, and then January 2. However, we will not have any changes to our regular trash and recycling since the holidays, those pickups do not happen on the holidays themselves. We continue to have a regular schedule with no changes. I do want to echo what Santa said, as well as the mayor, and commend the street department. We did have an eventful weekend. Crews were out four different times. Staff was out, three crews and some staff as well. Four different occasions over the weekend, including a comprehensive salting yesterday afternoon, thanks to the weather event that could not make up its mind. Either rained, froze, rained again, dried up, warmed up, froze again, and so we had to keep hitting it with snow. The crews did a wonderful job, as you might imagine, even when you have tons of salt on the back of a truck. Maneuverability on second ice rinks, if you will, like we had over the weekend, was dicey and every bit worth the training that we put into the commercial driver's license that they all have earned and maintained. So we got through it. I think the roads are in very good shape. Hopefully, the worst is beyond us, and knock on wood, winter's over. But I doubt it. But again, they are to be commended. That's all I have, ma'am. Thank you.
Question, though. It seemed, I don't know when they got out initially, but it seemed like it was Sunday before, or Sunday afternoon, like before they ended up getting to quite a few of the streets. And I was just curious to know if, like, when they started, if it was, or if it was pre-treated, or, I mean, I think they did a good job once they were out, but I...
Yeah, they were out overnight on Saturday after the rain had stopped. They actually started at the tail end of the rain, because up till about five minutes before, the forecast showed that it was going to be, become freezing rain. And once the rain froze and it hit the ground, then that's where it started to become a skating rink, and so we wanted to stay ahead of it. And so they did salt all the mains and secondaries Saturday night. Then when Sunday morning hit, the idea was, again, the forecast showed that it was supposed to warm up at least enough that that salt, that hydrochloride would activate. It did not, the temperatures did not reach what they were supposed to. They started to peak, and then they started dropping around noon again, and that's when we called everybody in to take care of it once and for all.
Mr. Kirby, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, Madam President. I just wanted to thank everybody for a great 2016, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, as well as a healthy and prosperous and fulfilling 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Fergie, any comments this evening?
I have nothing at this time, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council members this evening?
Yes, Madam President. I just have a question for Mr. Titterington. CSX went through and redid their tracks going out to the granary, and they left all the railroad ties and everything that was left over. Does CXX clean that up, or who's responsible for that?
CSX is supposed to. We can follow up with them to make sure they didn't forget or miss something.
It's a lot of railroad ties. I'd just be concerned that some child gets, starts crawling on them and gets injured. Are they usable?
Probably not.
Any other comments from council members? Any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments or questions from the audience?
Pastor Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. It seems to me like we're going to second reading on the two issues because of the word "emergency legislation." Now, if that word wasn't on there, this council would have suspended all rules and regulations and everything and accepted it. So really, by putting that on there, you're delaying your time that you have to get this passed, to get it on to the thing for February. So hopefully, you'll take that off before the next hearing or council meeting, so that this city can move forward one way or another, so that we as citizens can have a chance to vote on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience this evening? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Merry Christmas, and have a peaceful and Happy New Year.